Cambova.
Looks like some milfoil with that.
All right. I'm gonna call this meeting to order before it gets too far on the line. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
But I think it's sort of a matter of the last two. To the Republican Party, one nation under the universal liberty and justice law.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Truster.
Excused. All right, consent agenda, you have your packet includes the meeting minutes from July the 11th, as well as accounts payable in the amount of $713,283.04.
Mayor, just one note on the minutes. I was not in attendance on July.
Right. So noted. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve. Okay.
Second.
Motion by Gardner, second by Leo, any other items, corrections, or questions? Discussion items? Okey doke. This is roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Back in.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
All right, staff reports, you have them in your packets. I'd like to thank the manager for adding new and new and new. That's very good. And I'm curious if you want to elaborate a little bit on the $100,000 match with the ARPA funds.
Yeah. County chairman approached me to let me know that the city should present a project to either, two projects, one could be to deal with telecommunications or the other projects, they have ARPA funds that they've designated as for water infrastructure. So John Moxie and I went down to a water committee work group meeting to present a project, which was a water asset management plan, which is a tool that will use to identify lead services that need to be replaced. We thought we did a great presentation. I recently heard that the project needs to be geared more towards a shovel-ready physical project in the ground. So we're gonna go back and make another presentation on August 3rd. But we felt like our presentation was well received. It seems like a great work group and Dean is here.
Yep, we'll hear from the county commissioner here in a minute. All right, very good. All right, anything for staff and their reports? Any questions, comments? All right, don't see any. All right, next up, we have agenda changes. I have none, so our guest speaker is Dean Capping, our county commissioner. Come on on.
First, Ryan did a great job in his presentation to the waterspace work group. And obviously, we're sitting on like $23 million in ARPA funds. And the commission decided to push that to broadband and water. And so I've been trying to get to the groups I represent saying, hey, if you have a shovel-ready, this is the criteria that's presented within it. And the presentation was good, but it has to just fit into a, almost like a niche of going shovel-ready. It could be for iron pipes, it could be for water sewer, I mean, that type of thing. So just get it, just so it fits it. And I'll do, I can help that. Just to remind you that the senior millage is coming up. And just to give you some numbers on that, because like, I'm lost unless I look at the numbers. Let me just give the mission statement a minute. Dedicated to serving elegant county seniors by developing and coordinating services that support their independence, maintain their dignity, and preserve their quality of life. And if you look at what they did last year, 88,548 meals delivered to senior citizens, 39,389 hours in-home support, someone who helps bathe them, clean their house, is with them because they don't have family to do that, helps keep them home, 118,000 miles driven for senior citizens in transport, need to get to the store, need to get groceries, need to get to the hospital. We give out about 700 a year, the purrs buttons, as far as the alert buttons, and then 9,591 hours of adult daycare. You don't have people to see them, they need somebody to just blow them up. And also, I think it's a battle surface, take a look at what it is, so you know what you're voting on as far as the millage that's coming up. Just to mention Westside Park, I'm sure you love it like I do, I was there just this past weekend, the water was incredible. But we hired a contractor, it's called, we're getting conceptual designs in August 2 for the stairway that we lost with the water. So hopefully, we'll get the designs for that, get that thing in there, so by next year, we'll have something. Just to know that's coming up. And then, just know that the fire chiefs helped, we have a pilot program, I chaired the 911 policy board. And there was an issue with response times to victims, so 911 call comes in with PI accident on Blue Star, and there was a glitch within how they were dispatching fire. And they would dispatch the sheriff's department or the police department, they would go through asking about 10 questions that are national questions. And then with that time delay of probably, you know, three to five minutes, then they dispatch fire. Fire the one who are trained to give medical care to the victims, not law enforcement, I wasn't. You want fire there to do it, because we don't have the training for it. But anyway, there's a pilot program, the chief really helped within that, just know that he did a great job in helping to mediate something to get done, and that was passed at our 911 policy board meeting last week. So great job with that. Also know that we do a five-year operational plan, so for our budget, we do, we push it out five years, and then we have 12 different unions, we go, okay, what do you need? We had 42 personnel that they said they needed in the next five years. And we try to make it so it's not a wish list, we try to make it, here's a criteria that we're losing, that we're using to try to get there. And we put just a lot of time in being responsible for your funds that you give us to do that. Also, just to mention to you, there's a scrap tire, you can turn in your scrap tires August 6 from 9:00 to 12:00, that's sale in township, that's for the whole cities and county, the county can, anybody can bring it there.
Really?
That's what it's set up for, but scrap tire, we do that three times a year, and it's there for. And then, just know that we have a facility master plan, and you know, I think you knew about that CMH is moving out, I mentioned it to you. And then we're gonna move some of the services in from the courthouse, make that simply courthouse, we're gonna add another circuit court judge, we're just okay for that. We're also okay for another district court judge. So we're gonna try to probably move the drain commissioner out of there. And we'll see who else has to be moved up, we have a master plan that we're just working on and doing that, making that happen, and to be responsible for that. But thanks for letting me speak.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Questions, go ahead.
Going back to the ARPA funds. Zeroing in on water eligibility shovel-ready projects. When were those funds available? Is it, they're still not available, or are you considering requests now?
Request now, so we have only one, like the next month.
How about retroactive requests? For Campbell Road. You and I just kind of mentioned that to you, where we spent
I was listening to.
$200,000 for just lead replacement. Probably a third of that million-dollar project was a water line shared between Sagittuck and Douglas.
The issue that we have is, we have five criteria within getting the ARPA funds, and that's that we're matching ARPA funds from you.
But we paid for it already, so there's already, we've done our fund match.
No.
Or, you know, general fund, so ARPA has to pay, and then you.
Yeah. I'll ask that question, I honestly don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for asking me, I'll get back to you.
Just to build on what Mark said, obviously, water top priority, I think we're all in agreement on that, but is it, do we have enough time to have something on broadband as a backup? If the water wasn't to work, I'm thinking mostly about the fiber optic that we've got terminating at the bank and some sort of, you know, some broadband grant, maybe two. Okay, fair enough.
It's not, the criteria is different with broadband, really. And since you have Jill, who's on top of it, she's jumping at it. And you know how many, so broadband, what percentage of the city has broadband?
Do we know?
You know, that number, is it 80%, 90%?
I don't know.
Yes and no.
Yeah, depends, what time of the day.
Well, lots of us have it, but is it functional?
I just know that, you know, Holland's got a millage on the ballot for their fiber.
Be great to have her just come and, hey Jill, come here for the next meeting, she'll be here in a minute, and she can tell you all that's going on, who services this, and how to get the funds that are available to you. Because she believes that not only do we have, we've really allocated 18 million for broadband, about three to four million for water, she believes there's $42 million coming in from the state that's gonna be for broadband.
Okay.
Other 42, so you have to just get Jill here, and she's really the guru within it, because we hired her as our director of that.
Great, yeah, I know she had put out a survey asking folks to check their speed and whatnot, so she probably has all that data already.
She does.
Okay, good, all right.
Just perhaps as a contingency.
Yeah.
Obviously, water is the top priority, but Dean, I want to say thank you, I've probably seen you more.
It's wonderful, it's great, so thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okey doke. At this point, we're at public comment on agenda items only. If we have anybody here who would like to come up and speak on agenda items, that'd be great. Step up, introduce yourself, please limit your comments to three minutes.
And Fox, City of Sagittuck, this is just my periodic updating of you, for you all, from the most recent July 18th meeting of the Fire District Administrative Board. I won't go through the litany of things in great detail. We approved $117,420 in accounts payable. The data for the month should be in your packets or available to you. We, Fire District has submitted for two grants, MM, RMA, GRAP grants for vessel monitoring system for the fireboat, and for funding for staff qualification classes and so forth. We also, I know it's a fairly significant concern in the area. The EMS transport survey, public survey is out. If you haven't got one, you should have gotten one, so by all means, contact the Fire District, and they'll make sure you did. I know they looked at several sources for, and I think the city, but I'm not sure, for email addresses for that. Designed to gauge the public's, not just the public's interest in having resources, personnel, and equipment located here to handle ambulance-required emergencies. But also to determine, best we can in a survey, how much people are willing to pay for that in terms of millage or dollar figure, monthly figure, whatever it is. As you all know, nothing comes free anymore. The board looked again at the, and reviewed the updated questions that had been submitted in two groups from city council to the Fire District. And they had already gone through the first group, and this was through the second group. And then we had probably, for us at least, the biggest item on the agenda was reviewing the chief's performance. And we entered closed session to do that and to make recommendations for his salary adjustments, our increase, annual salary increase, which we approved. And it takes him up to most, if I'm not mistaken, almost right at the national average for fire chiefs salary. So it's within at least that comparative base. I apologize, I did not copy the exact figure, but it's easily available if anybody wants it, you can email me. Then got a nice thank you note from the Community Church of Douglas for stuff the the Fire District helped them with on a kind of a community affairs basis. We also, I remember these statistics as best I can, and my feeling.
So Dan, your time is up. I'd also like to point out that we did not get a report in our packet this time. So if you want to take that back to the chief, that would be really nice. It'd be nice to get that report on a regular basis with everybody else's reports.
Supposed to happen automatically, so I'll ask. I know Chris Mantles is out on training, so that may be the, that may be the fly in the ointment there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Other folks that would like to come up for public comment, who are here in house? Anyone online, Madam Clerk? Very good. We have no public, no introduction ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. The first up is the structure doc license transfer, Mr. Manager.
There's a fun one, this is on page 14. We talked about this at the workshop. So the attorneys have drafted this assignment of lease agreement, so this is just somebody selling their home and then assigning their lease assignment of what they have for the doc to the new owner. So the motion would be to approve, the recommended motion would be to approve the agreement as attached.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the agreement as attached.
Second, please.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Leo, second by Dean. Questions, comments?
Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just confused by the wine guards as the assigner, and the Wren family as the assignee, but in the, it's under Neil LaForte.
Yeah, so that's acknowledging that there's actually two parties to, that there's, the doc is split. So this is what you have to pay attention to, is the assignee and the signer. That's the important part. And then they're acknowledging that there is another owner of the doc, which is the LaForts, who signed over their interest to the Melrose family.
And that was last year or something like that, yeah. We approved that.
I know, it's confusing.
Okay.
And this has been in place, this arrangement for years.
There's two dock agreements on the one.
So they're acknowledging the other party on the same dock.
We have one dock where it's, there's two agreements on it. Okay. Awesome, thank you.
It's not that awesome, but yeah.
As long as everybody knows what's happening.
Two sides of the dock.
Two sides to one dock.
Madam Mayor, just a question, I had a constituent ask me about this, and I didn't know the answer. So a dock assignment lease, does it go with the sale of the property, or could it stay with the person that has the lease? So in other words, if Mr. LaForte had chosen to keep the lease, just as an example.
Yeah, I think they would actually be able to do that. Probably makes the sale of the home less attractive, but I think they would be able to keep their assignment.
So it doesn't automatically go with the property versus the home per se, yeah?
I don't. Yeah, that's usually. For sake of discussion, I don't know about that, because they could apply for it, and so you would have to approve it, but typically, they go to the adjoining property owner, has been kind of a consistent, you know, rule through the years. But I guess it's something the council would look at and decide. That's, say their request would be honored, but I think they should.
Right.
Yeah, I was just saying that as a matter of fact, I was just saying, I would think that they could keep it, but maybe not.
Ultimately, not one.
Yeah, at some point in time. But, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, and we did discuss this at the workshop, and I just want to make sure that we're all clear that this doesn't really change any of the terms and conditions for the city. This is basically just transfer from one party to another, but the city's rights remain the same.
Correct, yeah, more like a reassignment than something.
That's true. Fair enough, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Good questions, good questions, anybody else? All right, with that, this one's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Back in.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have the wind feather signage request from the Center, Sagittuck Center for the Arts. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we have a request from the SCA. I see that Kristen Armstrong is on Zoom with us today. And when they have their farmer's market, the vendors would like to be able to identify themselves by using these, what we call feather flags, the wind flags. And the ordinance does not allow for these to exist. You had an example at the pump house most recently, where you made an exception there. Kristen is looking for the same grace to allow her vendors at the farmer's market to do the same. And so that's what's happening.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve the request to use a wind feather sign at the Sagittuck Center for the Arts as described in the attached request to promote the vendors at the Friday and Tuesday farmer's market at 400 Culver Street.
Second, anybody?
A second.
All right. Motion by Stanton, second by Leo. Questions? And we do have Kristen on the line, so.
Yeah, a couple, I think I missed this when it was being discussed previously, apologies. So it's quite limited to the Fridays between 9:00 to 3:00, and then the Tuesdays from 10:00 to 10:02. That's when they're up and that's when they're down.
Right.
Do we have any sense, and I may have missed it in here, do we have an expected number of these flags that would be?
I believe the answer is one, but we'll turn to Kristen to help us out with that.
Hi, Kristen. Hi, good evening, everyone, thank you. So currently, there is one vendor on Fridays who has a wind feather flag, that's it. But I guess I would ask for permission that if more than one person, a vendor, I should say, would have a wind feather flag, that would also be acceptable currently, and really for years, it's only been the popcorn guy.
Okay.
So this is per theoretically, every vendor could come and ask for one on a certain day. Is that what we're thinking about, we're opening ourselves up to? As opposed to just one advertising the entire market? Say it's open, can you kind of fill in that?
Can you elaborate, Kristen?
Yes, right, Mark, the request is from the Sagittuck Center for the Arts on behalf of the small business owners who are vendors at the market. So the SCA does not have a feather flag out along the sidewalk. These would be vendors that are inside of our parking lot, who, in front of their tents, would like a wind feather flag that says lavender, or homemade candles, or, in the case of the popcorn guy, it says popcorn. And it's because the tents look the same. And so it's another way for them to help identify for customers what they're selling and where they are. So this is inside of our lot, in front of those individual tents.
But the flag would be in the city right away.
No.
Oh.
No, it's.
It would be inside.
On the SCA.
Be on private, your private property.
Right.
That's a full different story. That was my concern, Mark, because I've heard from constituents as well about competing businesses, putting things in the right of way to advertise, and then somebody complains because they want to do it. So I think if it's on private property, if it's within the SCA's perimeter, that helped satisfy my concern. Thank you.
Different story.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that, Kristen.
Other questions? If not, this is a voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Kristen. We are up to public comment now. You're welcome to come up and address the council on any topic. Please introduce yourself and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Anybody on the chambers? All right, anybody online?
No.
Okay. Excellent. In our packet, we have two pieces of correspondence, the Oval Beach Pass letter, and then the C2AE Blue Star Trail questions and responses. So that's for your application. So boards, commissions, and committee reports, Mark?
We had our monthly meeting for Cali, we could go today. The manager has submitted to Eagle the cross-connection control program. We touched on that at the last meeting, I believe. We're in the, Cali is in the process of the annual lead and copper water sampling. We need to get 20 samples from throughout the customer base. They're getting more and more difficult to find, because you you can't have like treated water, so you can't be on soft water, so it has to be, you know, so it's so, but anyhow, he's working his way to get the 20 required samples. One SOFAR has detected a slight level of lead, but within acceptable limits, but it's gonna happen. We got an update on the extensive water work that was done around Sagittuck High School, which Ryan's real familiar with, just an update from what was occurred up there. And then we discussed, and I touched on this also at last meeting, we had more discussion regarding feasibility study and proposal to replace and relocate both the incoming sewer waste water sewer line to the plant and the outgoing effluent line that ends up at the Combs River. After discussing that, the board approved expenditure to Fleece and Vandenberg the amount of $18,300 to do the effluent, which is the outflow pipe study, and $19,700 to do the effluent relocation study. Three to five years, probably out before we get the results of that. There's a lot of evaluation discussions with Eagle, looking at various properties, you know, things like that. But anyways, that process was approved by the board. That's it. Get the report out this week, you guys.
Appreciate it.
Holland? Just wanted to say it looks like C2AE, our engineer Rusty Owens, who was with us on Wednesday, submitted responses to end, so now we wait.
All right, very good, very nice article in the Holland paper.
Nice article in the Holland paper, and I just really want to commend Ryan and Danny DiFranco for bringing their experience with brands and this type. And also, just the level of cooperation is really, I think, at an all-time high, really, between the three managers. That's made everything mine, so just very professional and appreciative.
Historic District Commission hasn't met for a couple of months, because we haven't had any applications. Next meeting, though, is August 4.
Saw that, Mark.
Planning Commission met last Thursday, the 21st. We had a very nice solemn goodbye to Cindy, so flowers and hugs and smiles. And thank you very much to Dan for thinking of Cindy in that time, and it was, we will miss working with her. We had a lot of discussion around the tri-community master plan, and more specifically around what exactly might be the purpose, or some of the first items to be discussed. And short-term rentals just seems to come up often among constituents and the planning commissioners in terms of interest for the communities. So that's coming in the future, in terms of that overall process, so.
Okay. Scott?
Interviews for applicants for the Parks and Rec Committee continue. Both the mayor and superintendent Herbert have participated in these interviews, along with myself. Very impressed with the caliber of the applicants we are seeing. Frankly, I would love to give them all a position on the committee, because we've really got some tremendous talent in this community that really wants to contribute to our improving our parks and our recreational offerings. So very optimistic on that committee, once we get the membership established.
Yeah, very good. Nine applicants, one individual notified us late at the end of the week that she just didn't have the time. We wrap up tomorrow, so eight really qualified folks.
Yeah.
Very, very good, very good chats with them. All right, very good, mayor's comments, just this weekend is Venetian, get ready. Get ready, I know Scott, your eyebrows, and getting ready for that, so thank you in advance. I know that that's a busy time for everyone, so thank you so much. Also, just a general reminder that to all of us, we are, as a result of our city being a member, members of the Michigan Municipal League. And if you haven't been on the website, you should, because there's a blog that you can get on and get the, you can basically have it sent to your email, so Inside 208. And it gives you really good short clips on all the legislation that the MML is working on our behalf for, because they are our lobbying organization. And the short-term rental issue is a big one, they've been spending a lot of time lobbying on our behalf with the House. Uh, with the House and the Senate. So if you haven't and it's something that interests you, I get those, um, you know, when they're necessary and then. Every two weeks, there's the live with the MML and it's a. Usually an hour from twelve to one and it's very informative. They take the time with their lobbying crew to fill folks in who are on the line of what's going on. Um, and what you can do to help, whether it's calling your representative or your senator. Um, so that's, that's something well worth your time. Um, I would, I would encourage everybody to. Take advantage of that. Alright. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, uh, I believe we bypassed council comments.
Oh, I thought I had that, sorry. Okay, I'll go back around with the council comments.
Nothing at this time, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would, I would like to go back to correspondence fourteen B. Uh, clarification on page twenty-two. There's a comment in the response that says the city is willing to hire a qualified archaeologist to conduct a field survey. Parenthesis Cardinal, Cardinal, for your request, they are in the process of soliciting a proposal for this work. If I understand correctly, that it's in the township, not the city. So I don't think the city has financial responsibility for that.
That's correct.
That should be corrected by the engineer.
So noted.
Thank you. Uh, two is, I do want to discuss and please take this in the interest of. Wanting to do the right thing and, and discuss timing. Um, on Friday, July eighth, the city manager and the city manager of Douglas. And I believe the project coordinator for the B S T received an email from the M dot grant. Grant, get the name of the office. With some questions and some responses to the grant application. That email was not shared with the entire council. I did not receive a copy until Friday, July fifteenth. That copy was sent by a private citizen to the council. I would like to question the manager. Why was that email not sent to the council or shared with the council on Monday, July eleventh? Help me understand the thought process and not sharing that with the wider council.
Madam Mayor? There's probably been hundreds of pieces of correspondence between M dot, our engineers. And your professional staff. Why this particular piece of correspondence has caught the, the attention of so many, it's beyond me. Um, but we were, as explained at the workshop, just going through the process of applying for the grant as directed by council. So I don't share every piece of information or correspondence that goes back from M dot to, to our engineer. So this didn't seem too special to me.
I would disagree. I think that was a very important piece of communication and I could have been in a position as a city man, or city. Uh, representative. And if a constituent's asking me this question, what if I had been asked about that email? Subsequent to receiving it from a private citizen on the fifteenth. And I would have said I have not received that correspondence. Subsequently, um, the mayor responded to that private community or to that communication from the private citizen on the. Fifteenth and mentioned a meeting that took place on the thirteenth. And I also want to ask at that meeting, apparently the other member of this committee, of this council that's on that committee. Were they asked to join that meeting as well?
Not everyone was asked to join, not all members of the committee was asked to join that meeting.
I'd be curious as to why a council representative was not asked to join that meeting, who's been a part of that process, literally from my understanding since day one.
Not all members of the committee, maybe in hindsight, he, he should have been, but not all members of the committee were invited to that meeting. Um, and then it brought, if you ever do get, Mr. Gardner, if you ever do get questions from citizens regarding. A lengthy process and they kind of want to know where things are at, please do send them my way. It's, it's not my expectation that members of council will have a pulse on everything that's going on at all times.
A subject of importance like this to the community, to the tri-communities, especially the city because of our financial commitment to this. In my opinion, it's something that should be shared immediately, so we can have an understanding when questions are asked. I do not want to be in a position of being approached by someone and asking me a question about a piece of correspondence that they've seen as a council member, I think I should have received. So just, I think we can do better on these communications. I think we have to trust the public as well as that they have the ability to understand and not. Misinterpret information that's received from the state. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
It's my expectation as well.
Other council comments?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, so I'll go back to mayor comments on that note. I think we all as council are pretty smart and understand that we work within a strong manager, weak council system. We hire our professional staff to do just that, be the professional staff. We are not considered professional staff and it's not our place to be professional staff. If a constituent comes to us with a question and we don't know the answer. We have a professional staff member to whom we direct them. That has always been the case and it will always be the case. Now I know things have changed in the last twenty years and we didn't always used to be in a strong manager, weak council system. But we are now. And many years ago, it used to be seven council members who were kind of individuals and ran the city. That's not the way it is anymore. We belong to Michigan Municipal League. We are a professional organization. We hire professional staff. We act accordingly. If you don't know the answer, direct folks to the appropriate manager. That's all it is. That's all it takes. You would be doing that at any professional organization that you will belong to as an employee. We expect nothing less of you here. Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright.
Second.
All favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll see you tomorrow.